February 4, 2020, Duval City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise for the flag to the left by Councilmember Mike Evans?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you give that to your seat? Can you please take the roll?
Sorry.
We have a substitute clerk tonight. Stephanie is filling in for Ms. Whitehouse while she's on vacation. And so thank you for taking your time out of your evening to come and serve us.
Just got on the list, huh? Mayor O'Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Nikki.
Here.
Councilmember Ira.
Present.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Langwell.
Here.
All right. Thank you. With that, under additions or corrections to the agenda, your consent, please add payroll for February 5, 2020, in the amount of $293,264.61. Claims for February 4, 2020, in the amount of $168,986.56. Are there any councilmembers that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
Sure.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's?
In staying with the council procedures, do we need to vote on the excusal of Councilmember Hoag's absence?
You can. I believe council procedures, yes, we can do that.
I think what it does, I think what that does is if you have somebody excused absences, you can actually lose your position every century. So if we do excuse an absence, it kind of erases that and it becomes, and it doesn't accumulate.
I'm assuming this evening, the absence is excused regardless.
Yeah, I assume so. But I just know we've been trying to follow procedures to the letter, so it's in there somewhere. Should look up before we get up here. I have a little bit of excuse for Councilmember Hoag's absence.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Do we have any comments from the audience this evening? And you'll have, if you could provide your name and address, then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Michelle Benter and Duval Metternary Hospital, located at 26415 Northeast Valley Street. And I'm here representing the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. Our next chamber meeting is Thursday, February 6, at the Duval Visitor Center from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And we're having the first of our two focus pods meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Would it mean what else in the audience would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to scheduled items. First up is the mayor's report. It's been a really busy couple of weeks, to say the least. Snowfloods, landslides, water rescue, more floods coming. In addition to all the routine business, almost two weeks ago was the quarterly Snoqualmie Valley Governments Association. Thank you to councilmembers Napland and McHenry who attended. I have obviously taken on additional roles with other organizations and have chosen to no longer serve in the Eastside Transportation Partnership. And in that meeting, we were able to nominate Councilmember Napland and Mayor Lisk from Carnation to serve for the Snoqualmie Valley Government Association representatives on Eastside Transportation Partnership. And Councilmember Dustin Brune from Carnation is an alternate. There is still space for one more alternate from either of the three cities. So if anybody's interested in serving that alternate position, please let me know and I'll make sure it gets to ETP. At SPGA, we had the Executive Director of Puget Sound Regional Council, Josh Brown, came to speak. There was a lot of discussion about aviation because of the studies currently going on in the region about the airport needs and what have you. So it was a really informative discussion with him. It's always nice that he comes out to our meetings once a year. Next up, we had the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Action Conference. So I did attend that, along with most of the councilmembers from the Snoqualmie Valley. We had good conversations with legislators, good updates on legislative priorities. Of course, the big issue is all about transportation in 1976 and what's happening with that. We had a panel speak from the four corners, the House leadership and Senate leadership, regarding what was going on with the transportation side. Regardless of corner or party, everyone agreed that the transportation projects that are now pulled need to be forward. And everyone agreed that they need to be funded. It's just a matter of how they make it happen. And that's probably not going to be the session. So we're probably looking at another major transportation package in 2021 to come forward, hopefully. In addition, the governor spoke, gave some updates on what he's working on. And in general, it was overall really good information. There was a session that I attended on community courts, which was quite interesting with the wraparound services that are provided. They have, Spokane County has an 86% success rate in reducing recidivism for people that are chronically almost going in and out of jail. So that's a pretty amazing success rate, and it's a program that we'll be looking into here to participate in with King County. Also had the Sound Cities Association Annual Board Retreat. For those that don't know, I was re-elected to the board in November, November or December, and was selected by the board to be the Secretary of the Executive Board. We spent an entire day down in Renton together last Friday, going over SCA goals, our mission vision, team building. And one thing that I really, really liked is that our board set a list of guiding principles for the year. And so that's something that I will be bringing back to our city as well, because it really fostered a useful conversation between all of us. And the nice makeup about the board this year is everybody is really excited to be there. And it's going to be a fun group, and we're going to get a lot done. So I'm really excited about that. Next up, we will have the Association of Washington Cities Mayor's Exchanges next week, so I'll be attending that. Tomorrow, I'll be spending a good chunk of my day scheduling meetings with legislators for the 12th or the 14th. And it would be really beneficial if we could have some councilmembers come down to Olympia for that. I will be staying overnight because of the length of my day on the 13th, from 8:00 to like 10:00 at night. But if we can get a couple of councilmembers to come down, that would be great, because we do have some issues to discuss down there. In regards to legislation, there was some discussion in community as a whole about some of the growth management-related, housing-related bills. I'll be working on testimony, written testimony for those tomorrow. Those hearings begin tomorrow and go through Friday. Part of the key is making sure we maintain our ability to manage our own growth and manage our design standards and what have you within the community. Today, we had the Snoqualmie Valley Mayor's Meeting. Councilmember Catherine Lambert was there, and she was the first one to bring up the fact that the county council is now looking at a 0.2% sales tax for TBD for transit services. This conversation continued into the Northland Mayor's Meeting with Councilmember Rod Dombowski. And they're really looking at pushing this forward in a rapid manner. What it boils down to is several years ago, the Seattle voters approved a levy for transit services, but that also ended hurting others throughout the region. So they're trying to refocus and what they call re-regionalize the transit services and are hoping to put a county-wide measure on the ballot. So we will definitely need to be at the table during that process, and it will be a short timeline when it comes forward. So it was good information to have. I'm glad that they're looking at these things. That said, it's a real challenge when the county's still looking at finding ways to fund road maintenance as well. So it's a real catch-22 that they're going to be broke as far as new projects on the transportation side in just a few years unless they get additional revenue thanks to annexation. So that's another thing that they're working to fix at the state level. Additionally, it doesn't affect Duval today, but to me, it's very concerning. There was a major county-wide head tax bill introduced last week. It was a surprise to most. It was capped in the wraps. It is being supported by some big business, but my concern is the mandatory position and the fact that those things usually don't stay to the city size and business size that they're originally intended for. And I know that most of our businesses, if they had a head tax that was imposed upon them by the county, would make their businesses potentially not viable. And that just doesn't work in a small community like ours. So I'll be continuing to monitor that and see what happens with it. I'm hoping that since there's a little over a month left in session, that it won't go And with that, I think that's the end of my report. Any questions? Councilmember Napland.
So on the King County sales tax for transit, is that only for sales in unincorporated King County, or does that pay back?
There's no legislation yet.
Okay.
So right now, it's discussions, what I learned today is there's not a written piece of legislation yet, but it will be forthcoming. So I'm not exactly sure. We didn't discuss how that was going to be imposed. My sense is that it would be countywide.
So it would stack on top of what we?
If they're allowed to, if they're legally allowed to, yes.
Okay.
That would be the goal. Because right now, in King County, people that live within city limits are not paying and dying for the county roads. That's all done by unincorporated residents, and you're down to less than 250,000 people in here. All of the roads and bridges in King County, which is not reasonable or sustainable. Moving on, does council have, we didn't have any councilmembers that wanted to speak. Do we have any council community reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to administration update.
Good evening, mayor, council members, members of committee. It's a pretty small group this evening. I have a pretty quick update. Today, we did have a, I'll call it a mini government facilities meeting with Dorothy Langwell, Mike Remington, Carrie Herr, and myself. And we talked about what we're going to need, doing to help council move forward with the decision matrix of properties and potential sales and use. So stay tuned. We have a follow-up meeting on February 19. It was a really good meeting, and I think we accomplished a lot of goals in that. We will also be coming back with Councilmember Langwell and Councilmember Remington at the 228 council retreat to report back to the group on the work done to date. Good news is, we have some RFPs and RFQs out. So we issued our salary and comp study on Friday and Monday. We've also issued RFQ for attorney services. We also are tagging on with the Cities Snoqualmie on their financial software update. That has gone out. Going back to our attorney services, it's a pretty quick turnaround, so it closes on February 19. We're using the public purchase website, and so we've already got people that have gone in there. We're starting to already get questions. So within two business days, I think that's a good success. Our goal is to be in contract by 3/27. So that leaves us just a couple months. We're working with a gap contract, and we saw that I sent a council email yesterday. I had a discussion with the finance committee. I asked for a couple minutes at the end of the meeting to talk about our gap contract and if they were amenable to a discussion on utilizing existing services with the majority of law, but drafting up a new contract. It was a difficult, it was a difficult discussion, because we want to get into our new attorney services contract as soon as possible, but our existing attorney service contract ends this week, and to fill that 30-day gap was just a challenge for staff to try to do, given all the other projects that it was working on. So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with the committee and ultimately with the council as a whole as well. A couple of items that have come up to try and be more efficient that we actually started talking about today and have talked about it previously. Civic Plus has an agenda builder, so we are going to set up a meeting with Cities Snoqualmie because they're looking at using the Agenda Builder. It's part of the Civics Plus platform. So honestly, from administrative perspective, I am thrilled to look at that. Some other cities do use it, like the city of Snoqualmie, the city of Monroe, so you can take a look to see what that looks like. It's a really good public-facing agenda center. You can go in there, you can get documents. It's just, it's a really good tool, and we technically have Civic Plus, and it's a goal. So we're going to implement that goal this year. We're also going to meet with Snoqualmie to talk about the, essentially a building permit tracking system that they have and what the pros and cons of it were, because we're going to be looking forward to that as we move forward in our next budget cycle. The mayor did bring up the legislative update, so I don't want to go too much into that. But we are going to be working as much as we can to try and stay current with what's happening at the legislative level. The mayor's definitely involved regionally and has her ears to the ground. And so she's bringing back anything that we think that might be of concern to the city. And so we talked a little bit about the new bill. There's also a bill that impacts permitting timeline and processes, something within HSA that's automatically approved. So just some things that we're trying to chase. So stay tuned, and as we start providing feedback, whether it's to AWC, to our legislature directly, or through direct testimony, the mayor and I will work to report that back to council. Yes, Carrie?
Is there anything about the next meeting with midwinter break?
Oh, thank you, Carrie. One of the most important things. So our next council meeting is during midwinter break, and we were, we just wanted to check in to see if we have a quorum for the next council meeting. Thank you, Carrie. Over here.
Hi, Rod. I'm in the break.
Hey. Councilmember Napland?
I just haven't put that together yet, so I don't know.
Yeah. If we don't have a quorum, it's okay. We can have a meeting after the break's done or skip the meeting and pack one. We recognize that everybody has families that want to spend time in, especially since it's a short winter break. So it's okay if we don't have a quorum, we just need it up.
So if you don't know your schedule yet, and everybody's just figuring out it's part of the midwinter break, if you could email the city clerk by the end of date tomorrow, because then that way, we can just start working towards that packet at the following date, because technically, our packets are due on Friday. So I want to make sure that we're confident enough to staff time if they have an extra week to work on it. Thank you, Carrie.
Quick question on the RFQ. Thank you for getting that set. I've received a few questions on it. One of those is just to make sure that it sounds like we were using the MRSP in terms of the things that we're looking for in legal contract. Those are actually pretty routine contracting services. It could be with negotiations. There's all kinds of things that we do as a city, and it sounds like we're just using kind of a basic template, if you will, of services that we're looking for. So I think that part's been answered, and let me know if it's not correct. The other thing is I get a sense from council that they'd like to be a part of that process. And when I talked to the mayor, it sounded like we would have somebody in the interview process as well. I think this is worth a discussion at a COW, likely at our next COW. I think it might be helpful to have an agenda item, just so we can talk about the RFQ in more general terms, answer questions, and get a sense about participation of council. And that may be an item that we can do at the retreat as well. But it certainly sparked a lot of interest. I know that there was some controversy with it, but I think it's worth a good, open discussion to ferret all those things out and make sure that council has input as well.
Okay. Give me, just give me a second, because I want to look at the timelines really quick. So I'm assuming we're talking about the RFQ for attorney services. Number one, war is due on February 19. The qualification evaluation has to be completed by February 24. Our shortlist of firms notified is around the 26. Interviews are on March 3. And then it gives us two meetings at council. So I wanted to look at this, because if our next meeting is canceled, then we're not going to be, we're not going to get back to that. And so.
Thank you for the timeline. We could always do it, you know, I don't think there's any intent to try to stop the RFQ process or change it. I think that's pretty straightforward, and I think we all want to move forward fairly quickly to be able to get those legal services in place. You know, I think at the end of the day, it probably has more to do with the final selection and what that process looks like. Generally, I think the mayor just simply, you know, once the process is done, makes that final selection. And I think council would like to have some input on that process as well. We could easily, with that timeline you shared, discuss it. If we didn't have the COW council next time, and my sense is we probably will, but even if it was canceled, we could still do it at the retreat and have a discussion there. And, you know, the timeline can march forward, and we could still have input on that final selection, what that would look like.
Okay. So your retreat is on the 28th, and our shortlist is the 26th. So I think what I needed, what we need to do is go back, I need to go back and work with the mayor and come up with a solution, and let that get emailed out to council if we don't have a meeting this afternoon.
Okay. Because the final selection is done when?
Let me go back to this. Should we just be open? Our interviews will be shortlist the 26th, and then interviews will be the first week of March.
So that will give us time with the retreat to be able to talk about that and just that final part of the process and selection.
We want to backtrack on this. So there's just a couple of little things in the RFQ I might suggest we can change, but maybe I should just call a couple of tensions that it's really important. We have some things in here that talk about qualifications. There was a long, long reason. It wasn't clear to me how those, that list necessarily tied into the actual scoring. So just getting some information on that would be helpful to me, kind of how you were compartmentalizing from one to the other. And then I, the other thing is, the one to be sure about this is that the form of contract that you were visiting and envisioning in the RFQ, the way I read this is that there's, it's still subject to revision on our part. So it seems to tie into what you were saying is that, because ultimately, contract and core is subject to council. So if there's opportunity, then between now and whenever, we could at least communicate to you what we're seeing in that contract. Is that acceptable?
Yeah. We just want to, you know, and when you issue something like that, you want to try and put a sample out there. So we want to get a sample, send it to WCI, make sure that, you know, they're criteria. And Carrie actually worked on the RFP and sent it through that process. And it's just, it is a draft. Everything can be amended. What we would do is we would just go back through and if we, you know, whatever we amend, we would go back to the WCI at the end of the day, because it's a really important contract, so we want to make sure that we're covering our bases.
Yeah. And then along with that same thing, when I've looked at some other cities, they've done their contract in different ways when it comes to fee structures. So I think learning here is good, because it says, you know, that they're subject to public proposals or submissions.
Be creative.
Be creative. That's exactly right. But I've seen some cities that are actually submitting fee structures that are good for two years, others that have, you know, much more flexibility and adjustments. And since we're always price-sensitive around here, that was one of the things that I'd like to know a little more about, we could use a meeting for. And then the other thing in my research that I thought was very interesting was that in contracts of this seriousness, because that's really what it is, that in some RFQs, RFPs, what comes forward can actually be two applicants that the committee believes can be, should be considered for the final council vote. And that would be something we could talk about in the COW process. It might not be that way, might be that there's a clear cut decision, but when I was checking around different ways, sometimes that is the way it is required by council to do it. So just something to throw out there in the mix.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from council? Questions?
Councilmember Ira.
Thank you for your, all your work of putting this together. Appreciate it.
Actually, I want to make sure that I give a lot of credit to Carrie and Dana, because it was like really a team effort, so.
Appreciate it.
And I want to make sure, you know, we've never used public purchase before, and so, you know, we're growing in technology and moving forward as well. It was something that Dana had used in the state issue, and so we're really excited about it, because you can see lifetime, you can put responses in there. So if somebody gives you a question, you can actually respond to the whole group. It's, we're pretty excited.
I guess I don't know what public purchase is. Is it hosted on a certain website, which?
Yeah, it's a public. Do you want to?
Yeah, it's a procurement portal that's free to cities to meet as counties, and then it's free for them to register for one city at a time. If they want to do a bulk registration, then that's how they make their money. But any member can register on there for free.
Thank you.
Councilmember Langwell?
One more question then. So in, you know, in terms of recruitment, if you will, is this portal such that we are confident that the well-established municipal attorneys that meet our qualifications, and which are very much focused on King County, are, have we been able to confirm that that new list will get noted?
I can answer that. In addition to posting on public purchase, our finance director sent out the RFQ to everyone listed on the MRSC roster. And to date, how many firms have already pulled?
Four. Four of the main firms.
Yeah. So four reputable firms have already pulled the RFQ, and I suspect that at least two, if not more of those, will send in their qualifications.
We're already receiving a call in now. Is that a word for it? Thank you.
All right. We don't have any presentations this evening or public hearings, so we'll move on to new business. First up is the Geneva AV 20-08 ordinance for the Affordable Housing Tax Credit for Discussion and Order Decision. Ms. Mason, our funding director.
Good evening, Deals. This is Dana Mason, Finance Director. So the state approved legislation in 2019 that will have cities and counties to retain a portion of state sales tax for affordable housing. To receive a funding resolution of intent must be passed by January 28, 2020, and legislation authorizing the tax credit has to be passed by July 28, 2020. The city passed its resolution of intent already on September 19, and then this ordinance serves as legislation. If passed, the city will receive almost $9,000 a year for the next 20 years for affordable housing services. The funding is allocated from existing The funding is allocated from existing state sales tax, so it will not increase sales tax for citizens.
Are there any questions?
Councilmember Nambal. So when I was looking through the literature, it, it had talked about different types of qualified, you know, how you can spend this money. And I feel like we had talked about utility assistance. And then when I was looking at the categories, it was hard to understand. But would that be under rental assistance?
Yes, I think that would fall under.
Okay, and is there an easy way to administer this? I mean, $9,000 isn't very much. And so I just want to make sure that we have a mechanism to check the qualifications of people that doesn't become overly burdened.
So the city can partner with different local agencies to administer, like to choose who the rental assistance is, or even utility building assistance.
And I'll just add, for memory's sake, for council, it's been several months since we discussed this. My initial thought was it's such a small amount of money. We don't want to spend staff time doing it. We have to pass an ordinance order to be eligible for it. And that my thought was looking at an agency that's already working within the valley to help out folks. And that might be an example of like, for example, Hope Link. Or they may have clients locally that are struggling to keep up with their utilities. And the key here is we get a small amount of money so that we can help people stay in their homes. That that's, we're doing the work that we can, the money that we've got. So that was my, my thought process. But we, you don't have to determine exactly how you're going to do it before, before you pass the ordinance.
Is there a line of when you have to spend the money by, like, would we be under pressure?
No. And there is also legislation in Olympia where they have a trying to extend the timeline in which you have to pass the ordinance. But I mean, this is for us, it's such a small amount of money. It kind of seems like a no brainer. If the ordinance passes, you can get the money in and figure out what to do in the long run. Councilmember Lankel.
One of the things I noticed in the legislative ordinance was a piece of legislation that potentially would make it harder for cities to collect on past two utilities bills when tenant doesn't pay for the utilities. And it would make it so that the landlord would not be responsible for that. And so the issue, they had estimated the budget impact, it was actually quite significant. So I really like the idea of wanting to, because if that bill was to pass, we could get, we could, I mean, I don't, we don't have a huge problem, I suspect here. But you could have a situation where the tenant can't afford to pay, the landlord is then responsible, the city has to pay the cost. So this bill could, this, that's what that bill would do, of course. So this, by focusing on utilities, gives us a back.
Absolutely. So Councilmember Iyer.
Move that we adopt ordinance authorizing local sales and use tax to fund investments in forums for housing to be qualified chapter 3.06, section 3.06040 of the Duval Use Code, providing severability and establishing effective date.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Next up is Agenda Bill 20-09, Resolution Ridge at Big Rock Final Platte, Phase 2, for Discussion and Inward Decision. Mr. Lenishewski.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Stagg, Citizen, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. Go with a visual rendition of this update for you this evening. So the topic at hand is the Ridge at Big Rock Final Platte, Phase 2. Image coming shortly, just a second. Full screen. What you can see on the screen there is Big Rock Road is the bounding road that is on the southern edge of the project where the area fades to nothing on the right of your screen is Third Avenue. And northern boundary is the property remaining, sort of the Big Rock, the Ridge at Big Rock subdivision. We did Final Platte, first phase, which was the Third Avenue area, the commercial areas south of Big Rock, as well as the items between Third Avenue and the school district property to the east. This is the remaining units. We are getting very close. Their paperwork is in for last round of edits. They're to identify an easement or two, finalize their bills of sale. They have paid all their fees with Phase 1. All as, except for clearing their current development review account, which they will do. And final improvements on Third Avenue are 95% complete. So when this does come online, we'll be advertising and then opening up Third Avenue's extension to 143rd, which will be a four-way stop for the interim until 143rd is handled. Just say distance is a little too dicey to have that be a through on Third Avenue, which is a prominent material per our standards. But that said, are there any questions on the Ridge at Big Rock Final Platte? I will not be here on the 18th. You're welcome. If we are ready for Final Platte, I'm going to pack it. Ms. Thompson will be here to assist, or we could push it to the next meeting. But that is what I have for the update. Make sure how the segment is. There isn't any questions?
Seeing none, thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Bill 20-10, Contract Amendment with Maurice Smith for On-Call Services. Discussion and Inward Decision, Mr. Lenishewski.
Thank you again. Moving right along. So one thing, you have a substitute clerk today. The clerk did leave early, so I apologize for what I would consider a C-minus Agenda Bill packet for the public works on these two items that we've been talking about next, for telemetry as well as the biosol, it's all. We had to get things in a little early and they had all this momentum on some of our, our work progress. And for instance, you received a SCADA update in your email today on the, kind of the tasks. So apologize for that. But part of the reason for getting this moving forward is whether you do or don't, or are, or not aware, the telemetry system that the city once had has been sort of ruined and decimated over time by a couple of events that we have never really been able to stitch it back together in an operable way. All the facilities, when I say the water facility, so you have the Tole 1, which is out by Big Rock Road intersection with the Duval Fire Station outside of town. Tole 2, which is on the Tole alignment outside of town on the 276 County Road. The water tank at Big Rock Road in 2A-ish, 2A second-ish, a 2.2 million gallon tank at pump station, as well as the 555 tank in the Crestview subdivision. And then at the Whistle Tree Plant, those are where we have had computer connected, what we call telemetry control systems for our water system. So over time, those things have eroded, but we don't have connectivity any longer. The last nail on the coffin was the accident from last December that hit the control unit, if you don't remember or not. But a, a young man was traveling eastbound on Big Rock Road at a very high rate of speed and they almost shot him back and then hit the curb, hit a power pole, traveled over 100 feet in a ditch, smashed our cabinet as well as, and then hit the last power pole. He was moving quite fast. So with that said, we did lose our, our cabinet. We are in claims process, we'll stay on that, but nonetheless. We brought this forward because it is very important and we are going through a water comprehensive plant. We just had our, every three year, which turned out to be the fourth year by the time they scheduled it at the end of the year, water survey from the Department of Health. And my return here this last year has been, you know, getting back in the game, seeing where we need to go. Telemetry is a very high priority for many reasons. Seeing into the system, managing the system, the system has grown tremendously in the last 10 years, plus 20 years on top. So we do need to do the best job we can handling our water system. It is manual and hands-on right now. So for instance, you know, when, see our public utility test the meter at Tole 1 and we're only serving the citizens from Tole 1 instead of Tole 2 in the low flow time, which is winter, we have to manually go to the tank, turn the pumps on, make sure things are running around. So it's, it's just labor intensive. We have no visual, you know, we have no look into the system. I can't tell you how many gallons men are coming in. I can't tell you how many gallons men are going out. I can't tell you if we have pressure spikes in our zones. So it's important to bring this forward for many reasons. So I asked our on-call service contractor, Maurice Smith, coincidentally, he's also the one doing water system comprehensive plant update, if they could assist and get us a specialist. They do not house one, but they do have folks that they use who do this kind of work. And just so we are aware, you know, there's many things going on, whether anybody wants to realize that on a 24/7 basis or not. So it is a part of what we do and what we should be doing more of and just moving it forward. So budgetarily speaking, again, I did request the MM on-call funding and I will steer away from the Agenda Bill. But $840,000 was listed for Tole and other various projects. So the Tole Water Main Head in, Tole 2 is that project. Kennedy Water Main was amended through the budget process at $500,000. We are going out to bid for that very soon. And then the water compliance budgeted in its own right, and it has its own line at 200, but that wasn't updated by the time we lost finance. And now how to finance those numbers need to be updated. I was not intending to use or ask for any budget over and beyond what is allocated in the budget. But to be fair, if we were to go to contract for the Tole 2 and we expended every dollar, then yes, we would need to rejigger some of the funds. The revenues are coming in. We are almost exactly at 50% of the projected revenues for the 407 Fund through the end of 2019, so that's good to see. We do have 99-plus, I don't even know how many units we've submitted right now. 130 times the minimum $7,000 a pop. I think we made our annual contribution for next year or this year now. I'm not concerned about funding. This product is in our capitorial list to manage, if you notice on the CIP, which I tried to link to building work, I didn't put a link in the Agenda Bill. I should put a link to the CIP on the website. It worked. But telemetry is on the CIP to be upgraded and managed. So that is a lot of words. This is a schematic of our system from top to bottom, high to low, right? Tole is the high part. The pink zone is downtown is the low part. We have one, two, three, four pressure zones. We're getting rid of a fifth. It's a very small number. Down in Tole. And then the projected costs were 330, 33,246. You will notice that does not match the $40,000 requested. I didn't see the need to get exact. And I also see the need where we might need a little bit of additional work from the Development, Development Support side of Maurice Smith for our on-call. So I think we have spent about half of those awarded to date. Some of that reimbursable on the development community. So that's why I did put in a $40,000 amount to be amended to. So that said, any sort of questions can we entertain on the telemetry design? And this would bring us to a design package to go, big quotes, not quotes on, but to get a bit on putting it back together for our needs.
Any questions? Councilmember Nambal.
This is a quick one. Thank you for that explanation.
You know, you always help me get my, my working and available materials included.
I don't have to ask you. So I feel like there's telemetry with the sewer system as well.
Correct.
And I don't know if that is functioning at this point. I'm not a fan of scope creep, but also think of, you know, is this, is this, whatever we choose for the water, will it integrate with whatever we might choose for our sewer if we do that downwind or?
We intend to utilize the same programming.
Okay.
You don't have to use the same hardware, but the programming does work. Sewer system, the Whistle Tree Plant, you can go into any room in any of the buildings, put the screen and see anything going on. You can see that in the offices. So their system is, it's housed and sited, so it's all hardwareed, it's there, it works. You know, we pay for our annual maintenance program for the software. We have a SCADA guy that comes in and assists the monitoring team when necessary. So that place is locked down. We don't normally get into it from afar. That might be the only thing we consider adding. But, you know, with current staff, we have one just outside of town and two that are 15 miles. So it hasn't been a necessity, but, you know.
Any other questions for Mr. Lenishewski? Councilmember Iyer.
So you had in your previous slide, one more previous, maybe one more. Okay, there you go. So the Tole project, so we're doing a little, you know, brought Peter to take Paul, which is fine. But I'm hoping that your estimation is that Peter won't need the money? And this isn't just a guess that it's not going to need money?
Yeah, so the $840,000 for the Tole Water Main design, we're going through that process, it's kind of a little worris. And the update is the alignment that we expected to be there, that we had as built 40-plus years ago, are not exactly there. So we have to go do some sport digging. We're getting into that now, but the sport digging is out of easement and potentially onto private property. So we're working on where that alignment goes. PSC is working with us on giving us 10 more feet of easement, but they want it to be parallel to the existing line, which right now we can't confirm. So we're working on that. The capital programming, if you recall, was not on our CIP, was estimated at $1.8 million, right, for this Tole redo. The preliminary numbers we've had, even with using HDP, you know, fuse pipe for some of our more difficult areas where we cross some ravines and some sensors, was under a billion dollars. So total project-wise and program-wise, we should be under budget. Are we going to be around 840? Let's hope so. I think Kennedy Water Main, we see a couple other water main jobs open up. And we have that design done, our expenditures are out. We're now going to bid. They've been very low. So a similarly linked project that the fire department did for their extension out off of Kelly was, I don't even think it was 200. So it's a competitive time to be doing utilities. We really want to get out before spring because you can dig a trench in there and it's, you know, be smarter. So yeah, we're hopeful that isn't there either. So in the water compliance, I recall it was, I think, 245-ish. I think it was 242, but it's called 245. So we have a few numbers that we're out there.
Well, I think that came in over 20, the water compliance.
Yeah, we budgeted whatever 200 it was. And then we made some, we had to do some additions. We chose to do the resiliency, which is now part of Department of Health and EPA's requirement. So we, we got level with the game, so yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, from our perspective, yeah, from my perspective, I guess it's just that if you feel confident that ultimately we're going to get surprises, that's, that's good to me.
And we, I do not believe we fully, even if we get to construction in Tole this year, because we're still still working on the alignment, even if we go to construction, I doubt we'll finish. And I think from what I was conversing with the project manager on this, the HDP work has to be in dry weather. So if we don't hit this summer's construction, then we'll probably have to wait till next summer anyway. So that's just going to push things out.
Any other questions for Mr. Lenishewski? Does council want to move this forward this evening or send it to the next council agenda?
Everybody jump a lot?
Yeah, I felt comfortable reviewing it, you know, for my senses.
Let's kind of compress timeline from what I see that, you know, the recommendation is to try to get this moved forward as quickly as possible. And Steve might correct, the majority of this it looks like, too, is for that SCADA system. So we have the telemetry, and that's the big piece of this. It's not a big amount of money. That is the standard in the industry, is my understanding. It's going to improve our security, our safety. It allows for remote access for, you know, our technicians to be able to look and see what's going on without having to just have their boots on the ground. So for all those reasons, I move that, that council approve Agenda Bill 20-10, Contract Amendment with Maurice Smith for On-Call Services, authorizing the mayor to execute the amendment with Maurice Smith, additional funds for continued online support.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
And to be clear for everybody, this is a design so we can implement the next phase, which is purchased. Which we would come back to here personally.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Last item of new business is Agenda Bill 20-11, service contract for the transportation of land, application of biosolids for discussion and/or decision, Mr. Landeshevsky.
Thank you again, mayor and council. In your packet are summary of the two bids we received. We won't call this proprietary work, but there are very few people who actually haul biosolids. And again, early packet preparation led us to discover more items to review. So as I pull up one document in here. Thank you for the last, I had one notice Thomas was happy that doesn't have to go to meeting or anything like that. So, okay. Biosolids, um, not very exciting. It's something we have to do. I had a couple of questions come up, one on maybe the city's estimate of tonnage relative to the Agenda Bill's recommendation for moving some of the dollars around. So I was able to have, and we just did receive, they reconcile monthly. So when they reconcile December, we don't get final numbers from Tenelco where we're laying the plot until January. So we had 855 ton in 2019 applied. And over the past four years, we had a high of like 860 and a low of... So from 2014 to now, the high was 880 ton in 2014 of all things. The low was 684.96 ton in '15. So we have an average of 7, 7, 5. This year was higher than last year. With the new growth, we do expect our biosolids to increase over time. Since we put for the Agenda Bill, we estimated 25 ton a week, 52 weeks, that means 1300 tons. So if you take 300 tons, times the low bid, which we put in the packet at $64.75, you have the number that was provided. Second low bidder, Tenelco, was our current service provider. And they were, they were higher overall, but they didn't differentiate how they apply their materials. So there's two different classes of materials. Depending on the vector attraction, which has to do with how much active, active biological media you still have in your solids versus not having your solids. There are two ways to apply to the land. Tenelco doesn't differentiate how they handle anybody's solids. So even the truck, even if they're good or the not good ones, they apply them to the land, spread them and then disc them in. So the poorly biological managed solids have to be disced in within six hours. If you have a higher class material that doesn't need to be disced in because it has less biological media to fit in to be applied, it is applied to the land and does not need to be disced. So the low bidder separated how they treated those materials. After the bid, we tried to determine what materials we have. Well, we have currently Class B with high vector attraction, which would qualify for the higher rates. So 64.75 a ton, you get your $1 discount per ton annually, plus the $8.93 to have the additional labor put into the materials to disc it upon deposit for $72.68. That is higher than Tenelco by 18 cents, but we do believe through the last five business days and understanding vector attraction to have managed our solids, what you have on the screen there is a schematic, excuse me, of the facility. So the MBR, the membered bioreactor building, which is the last space for fun, I'll just take a minute to educate. This is the offices. They may pipe deliverers fluids to the plant through here. It is screened for this process as you're following the mouse. It comes into this basin after it's been screened to 3 microns. Anox basin is where we sit and have anoxic reactions. From there, it's pumped into an aeration chamber. The aeration chamber then activates lots of bugs, they eat each other. And then we move into the MBR, which if you've never taken the tour, and then my membered bioreactor is a little spaghetti tube. It points to my ground hole. It essentially sucks clean water through, nothing bad can get through. All the solids fall to the ground. They are pumped via pumps and this red line shows they come down and they are split north and south to the two solids holding tanks. So what then happens is we move fluids from fluids, it's fairly liquid still, but we move the fluid from there to the solids building where we press it, remove as much water as practical with the technology we have, gets us to about 12.5% solids. Now then it's in a truck and is moved from the site. Oh, my little mouse is on the screen. I'm so sorry. That's the key. This part, you know, crazy. Oh, my screen is out of your. I will add a margin on my side. So it, and it comes in, goes here, goes there, goes there, and it comes down to these two and split. So those are run in parallel, meaning if you're an atom that left there, you went into each of the tanks, effectively at the same time you made it to the biosolids building to be pressed and put in the trailer to be all the way applied. So as the solids age, we can actually lower the vector attraction rating. Unfortunately, the vector attraction rate is tested by how much oxygen you consume. So when your biosolids, the more oxygen you consume is an indicator of one, how much smell you're going to create. And then two, how many critters you're going to attract to your attractive materials for them to then take and maybe haul away non-all the way killed by media. To have higher vector attraction, we're working on changing our processes at the plant. So Mike's been looking on how we can age our solids. It will take us several months to get there, but if we can age the solids so they're actively degrading through our system, we'll run it in a series format so that parallelly come out, we'll go into one, sit and cook, go into the others, sit and cook, and then make its way to the hauling trailer. And we can't, we do not need to be in accredited lab for this test. We have already started running lab tests to understand our vector attraction. DOH has a form, they have a calculation ratio that we're using. So we are hopeful to get a handle on how we can make this cheaper. So no necessarily need an agreement on this now, but the rate that we are being charged is currently at $73.68 based on being out of contract with Tenelco. So they've adjusted for monthly service. So it would be good of us even to go down to the dollar less. It doesn't seem right. Contract is auto-renewed. Eighty-four ton change right now. So it was cheaper, it was $68 last month per ton. With that said, we have no control month to month. It doesn't make sense to get into a more lockdown contract. It is a three-year contract, it has openers for two additional years. We don't have to honor those at all. It's a three-year contract. They do have newer trucks that will leave trouble on site. We are kind of currently held hostage by the current service provider. So we have to manage other things and do more than we really should to get down here. But nonetheless, they have been a fine service provider for us for the last 10-plus years. With that said, I understand the notes do say again, the budget amount of, oops, that was the wrong button. 11300 times the math. A budget adjustment can be had later. It's up to you folks when, we're going to pay what we pay to get it all the way. We just want to do what we can to get the cost down as fast as practical to be utilizing the lower tonnage rate. With that said, if you have fun running a little bit of a loss of...
Councilmember Rednicki?
So actually I watched, we're about to do this video because I want to know where all this bio solid, but it's pretty interesting. Fertilizing our, okay?
It does go east.
So Class A, what is the difference again between Class A and A B solids?
There are, it's process types, so we're...
But process types and process types?
Oh, yeah. So on the screening, $72.68 a ton for the, for the lower class material and then $64.75 a ton for the higher class material, which is easier to manage once it's deployed to the fields. And for some reason, I don't know why they lower this $1, but you get a dollar back per ton at the end of the year. I guess it's a kicker. We didn't ask for a bit, but...
Any, uh, a break?
Oops, sorry.
So, so our budget projection was significant lower. Did we just estimate less tonnage or something? Or did we expect less tonnage?
I think we, and again, it wasn't here last year, but I apologize in advance for getting back to the packet. We had spent to date, I think it was 45,000. That was the 19th. So we've budgeted 78 and we were already over that estimate and... So to answer your question, we just have a budget number that isn't going to work.
Councilmember Nandland? So just looking historically, we've been running, you know, the last few years more in the $30, $39,000 range. And then last year it bumped up to 46. And now with this new price, it sounds like it will jump significantly higher. I like the idea that you're trying to keep the cost down. Are there other measures we can take? It just is surprising that the price would jump so much so suddenly.
Yeah, I think when we started in March last year, or whatever Mike gave me, you know, it was at 51 ton and then adjusted last year to $54.45 a ton. And then coming to the end of the contract, it's 68 a ton on a monthly basis. So they're adjusting it. And the US, I have no idea why do they bid it for, in fact, they thought nobody would bid it and it's been a bidding, so...
This is not one of those things where you can reach out and say, hey, anyone else?
Yeah, there is very few people that do. And we do have to enter into partnership because King County is part of the land application system on the other side of mountains. So that's part of this agenda item as well. Unlike the road patching, we have opportunity to rebid it and rejigger some things that really don't. Some of the side effects that we talked about today and you've been confirming with Mike, as we try to get our vector attraction rating down, you know, are we going to create a side effect of reducing some of the, you know, the water volume? Maybe, maybe not, because these are open air systems to some extent. Things do evaporate. I mean, are we going to lose a bunch? No. I think we talked about, you know, making sure that we have, you know, starting to educate the community on a more rigorous basis. What goes down the drain comes to us, right? Processed waste from people is easier and cheaper to process because that's what it's designed for than ground up carrots, beef, whatever else you put in your sink and turn in your, you know, your disposal to give us. So it takes much more energy to process non-humanly processed waste than does human waste, right? Because our body has honestly already digested the bulk of it. So now we are feeding the body for all the stuff people put down the drain. So if you had your sink trap, you put it in your garden bin or your regular, wherever it goes and saves everybody. So we talk about increasing our outreach area. We talked about it for last year. It's getting, getting to doing it is just another element without...
Our kids are a little busy these days, it seems.
Yeah, so that we will do whatever we can to lower our biological media. There are other things we can consider too in the long term. Drying would never work, but there are newer screw presses out, which actually can squeeze more water out than our current man screen does. So our belt press screen, so maybe we'll look at some of those on ideas in the future, but that's going to be an ROI situation. Are we going to spend 150,000 to save five every year? No questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Landeshevsky? Does council want to move on this to the next agenda? Councilmember Landland?
I'm fine with looking at, I love my tour of the facility. It was super educational and during that tour I had opportunities to actually learn about this hauling challenge and how difficult actually the last bidding cycle was. Because they had applicants that did not have good experiences with ecology, for example. I mean, there were issues there too. And so I appreciate that you're looking for other ways to handle it. And what I can say about garbage disposals is, I recall a number of years ago where in some building departments and in some cities, they were actually urging builders to not put them in for this exact reason. And I vetoed these ours. We also don't water grass. So, you know, but, you know, with urban, urbanization coming to devolve, this is just, this is what we have. So I'm happy to look forward. Thanks for, thanks to Mike.
We could always start an incentive program too. Maybe their GFC gets a $500 reduction if they don't put it disposal, but then you can never prove that $400 is going to happen. It's tough to follow.
Mayor, Mr. Brandon?
Steve, I didn't read through there. I didn't see anything where kind of compared what others paid for hauling.
Yeah, let's ask that too. I don't have any numbers on the previous.
Yeah, I'm just curious. No, I'm fully supportive of moving forward. We've got the little bid. It's always disappointing to realize you pay more, but I really see the cost of some of the services going down. And I know that having a place to go put this stuff is big. I think all of us appreciate that all of our biosolids flow downhill to the plant, but they don't flow away. And we need to haul it. It's very important for public safety as well as a very practical thing. So with that, I will move that council approves Agenda Bill 20-11, service contract for the transportation and land use application of biosolids, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract with the identified lowest responsible bidder and sign an agreement with King County for biosolids handling.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And I would like to take a quick moment of personal privilege while Mr. Landeshevsky is still standing at the podium. Last week, it came pretty quickly. Mr. Landeshevsky celebrated his second one-year anniversary with the city. And I just want to share with council and the public how much progress Steve has made in his department with efficiencies, with succession planning, morale building and really organizing to focus on priorities of our infrastructure and taking care of things, recognizing that we don't have enough people to do all the work. He's been able to really juggle and help make sure that the most important things are taken care of and we are very, very appreciative. So thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
We have one item of unfinished business. Agenda Bill 20-02, approved agreement extension, devolved foundation layer, or only Agenda Bill AV19-80 for discussion and/or decision, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, mayor and council, and thank you, Steve, for that lovely comment. I will not forget it.
The summary was, I made it better.
I might, not feel this, my mom was accused of having a lot of presentation from the law cameras, but Steve, that's...
I'm going to talk.
Moving forward to business, we are in our last review and edit of the DFA approval extension. We've come a long way, but I still want to say thank you for this. It's definitely worked by the party of DFA and the city, obviously our council and staff. And I really do believe we're there. This is, this is an agreement that staff is recommending that council authorize the city administrator to map over the next two years. But I do want to talk about just the big pieces that we looked at and revised. So one of the classes that we've requested, which is, which makes, it does make sense to include as part of the permit, that the permit belongs to... to include as part of the permit, that the permit belongs to both the DFA and Duval. That's a true statement. And I talked about that with a couple council members because technically that project was applied for when less got opened. So it makes sense. What DFA gets out of that is they get site review, they get design review, and they have a certain amount of time to execute those permit approvals. And so they'll be working on those over the next couple of years. But the one I think in that was outside of that, which was truly unique to DFA, was the structure that's out there that has the water materials in it. Because we want to make sure that we give them time to continue to finalize within the community and within the area as well. So we need some of the changes that were requested for that. But I'm not going to kind of explain what those are and what they really mean. We also talked about when DFA comes and meets, you know, with staff a couple of times a year, what kind of information are they looking for? And how we can message that back to the tour council and to our community. And so we did set some parameters. But one thing that we learned, you know, for DFA, I mean, including into those parameters, was there's some information, you know, that is sensitive. And so we wanted to make sure that, you know, that that was acknowledged as well. Although I will always say a pile of records, a pile of records, a pile of records, there's very few exceptions to that. But we'll be cognizant of that because that's important. That's really important to DFA. So we made some of those adjustments as well. So I think we've gotten to a place that we can all move forward.
Any questions for Ms. Thomas? Would someone like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we approve. Yeah, I went back to my number here. What is it?
The DA.
20-02E, is that right? I think you did that right now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have no further business on the agenda. Our agenda.